Okay, let's get this belt on.
Oh, no, we need more.
Okay.
Oh, nice.
I called Hunter Chesney. I don't know who you use to park him. I called Hunter yesterday. You got another five thousand dollars coming? Six fifty-five that you have to deliver to us. See, that's awesome.
I love her. Yeah, he goes four seventy-five. The Hunter, the dad, which is the ad radio. Don't lie about that. He's a general in the National. Go west to Larkmont Gentry about two miles. I use that Nate, Nate guy to handle him. You send it to Smithville.
Yeah, Hunter's the one guy I talked to. Stayed at my state. So I cut them in. Yeah, yeah, pretty well down.
That's why I asked him one day what his last name was. The general.
But this is not live stream. So it is live stream.
You don't want it to be that.
I don't care. I just want to understand what's going on.
We have in the past.
Livestream, great. And recorded, so we're clear. Yes, how do we think life?
Yeah, I've got it right here.
My daughter, she married the Chesney.
Oh, really?
Yeah.
Not related?
Okay, all right.
Well, and I was teasing Hunter about it. I said, you know, someone's a Chesney. Thank you. He goes, we're all related somehow.
Yeah, Elise, I've had a request everybody on the council to speak up.
Yes, I heard that request.
That they couldn't, they couldn't hear. Of course, Ron Coy, he's deaf anyway.
John, is that from online too?
What?
Is that from online too?
I don't know about that. It was just people sitting in, they couldn't hear when people are talking.
With these like scheduled.
No, you were good.
Reach out.
Working.
Go really, you got that figured out?
We're taking care of Elise.
Okay, we're good. Thank you very much. All right, welcome to the start of the twenty twenty-four Budget Workshop. We have Susan Cowan here of Baker Tilly to give us the in-depth review of our county financial plan. We've got a good amount of work ahead of us before we're thinking as we have been growing. We've been the number one and number two flexes for the county state for a handful of years, but with what is potentially coming, we need to be prepared for growing at warp speed and what that means for the next year, two years, five years, ten years. So there will be a lot of questions to ask. What is the future related to potential revenues we can expect to increase due to economic development? What are the needs that we can expect to increase and how are we going to plan to fund those needs? And with that, Susan.
Thank you very much, Elise. It's a pleasure to be here this morning again. Another budget season underway. So Paige was here last time in June. I believe she gave you all hard copies of the report. So I'm going to, and there's kind of a lot of pages there, so I'm not going to go over every page and grade them. I'm going to hit some of the high points because this is also still really the document. We have estimated budgets in here. Just getting your budget workbook yesterday, we've not had time to implement your, all of your budgets now into this document yet. So I'm going to point out the things that will help you as you're reviewing the budgets for the next couple of days and the things to keep in mind from this document, and then we can talk about some other items too. So we can start, I just want to draw to everyone's attention if we kind of jump in on about page.
Do we have this electronic?
So it's on the screen. It was emailed.
You would have gotten it in the last meeting. In June.
Yeah, from Paige.
By the way, Susan, you didn't like introducing this.
Oh, I certainly will. Co-part here. This is Andrew Stoll. He's been with Baker Tilly about a year.
Right.
And he's working with us on your budget this year and a lot of a number of other budgets. He works on TIF and a number of different projects within Baker Tilly as well, besides the CFPs and budgets, but he's been here just about, not quite a year, so throwing in anything, getting exposed. Sorry, so I'm just going to jump ahead to the Schedule of Assumptions, which is page ten. Under item one, we've noted the maximum levy growth factor. I'm sure as you've all heard, this year and next year, the DLGF is limiting the max levy growth quotient. We do not have the max levy yet from the DLGF. We expected to have it June thirtieth, but we do not. So as a, when we prepared this document still today, we are assuming it will be four percent. It could be technically less if the actual calculation that the DLGF does comes in somewhere below five percent. They, they will use eighty percent of whatever that number is. So obviously, if it hits five percent, they'll use four because that's eighty, four percent's eighty percent of five. If it somehow is less than five percent, then you can expect that growth quotient to be less. We are assuming currently that it will be four percent. So just know that your levies could be affected when that actual information comes out from the DLGF. So that's for the next two years, we're assuming four percent, and they haven't given any guidance thus far on what will happen the following year in twenty twenty-six. So we're assuming it would go back up to more of a standard range calculation of about four point nine. Again, whatever happens the next couple of years in the legislative session could change that, but that's the assumptions that we are working from currently. And then we, we'll just jump ahead into the actual cash flows into the General Fund. That's on page thirteen. I'll point out some commonalities in the cash flows. We have three years of historical, twenty twenty, twenty-one, and twenty-two. So from the financial documents that were provided to us by the Auditor's Office, and we've made sure that it agrees with what's on the Gateway Annual Report, what's in audits that have been completed, anything that revenue-wise that has been, you know, booked into the General Fund for these years, we use to make the estimates going forward for the rest of twenty-three, twenty-four, and then through twenty-six. So the top section, we sort of show what goes on with property tax, what the property tax levy is or the estimated levy is for the future years, and what the estimated circuit breaker is. Boone County has relatively low circuit breaker effect.
Sorry, can you? Go ahead. I'm, I'm following along, but I don't know if people in the room can see that or not.
No, you guys can. Nice. So the top section, then below that, that net property tax, which is line six for the index line there at the side, that's the amount of net property tax that you've received the past three, three years, and then what we anticipate you'll receive in the coming, this year and the coming three years. We then show the other types of miscellaneous revenues that the county brings in. In this case, the General Fund is your most active fund. It has the largest number of other types of earnings that come in there, including your lit certified shares, charges for services from various departments, clerk, department court fees, your interest comes here, you have some reimbursements that come back through this fund. So all in all, the blue line, the first blue line you hit there is going to be the total operating receipts. In this case, you actually brought in in twenty twenty-two, twenty-three point eight four million dollars in actual operating type receipts. You had some other receipts too, which we'll see down on the next page. As far as your actual operating, recurring, things that you can sort of count on coming in year to year, is about twenty-three million, twenty-three point eight million. Now, if you look at twenty twenty-three, you see that number has gone up. Those operating receipts are up to twenty-six. That's because you received a fairly significant lit supplemental distribution in May, double what you got last year. This year it was almost two point two million dollars. So that was for a large amount of that additional growth is coming in there. So as you are looking at your General Fund budgets this year, keep that twenty-six and then next year is actually, because we don't have the lit included in there, keep that twenty-four point three in mind when you're looking at your General Fund budget, because if you want a balanced budget, that's roughly the number that you would need to meet. Yes, you'll have some leeway because it's likely you will get a lit supplemental distribution in twenty twenty-four, but we don't know that. We won't know that till next year in May. So making the assumption without that, you would be looking for a General Fund budget of around twenty-four million dollars in twenty twenty-four.
With, with that number, I guess where I'm confused is that is line, going back to line six. So it was totaled back to twenty-four million. Shouldn't we be seeing a decrease in the property taxes with the legislation that's happening?
You don't see a decrease. You just, it's not going to grow as much. Because where you would have had five percent growth, now you'll have four percent growth. So it's still going to grow. It's just not going to grow as much. It's, they haven't stalled growth completely. They just slowed the growth. So you will still get some additional levy. It just would not be as much as if they did the full growth calculation on the max levy. So that's why you see, and keep in mind too, there's some shifting going on in the background. Maybe we've had to give levy to the Health Department or to the reassessment fund to make sure that their, their expenses are supportable. So this is just an initial stab.
Right, right.
It can change too.
Right.
So yeah, you're not going to see no growth. You're just going to see less growth.
And in my mind, I go back to what was said at our last council meeting, like the next two years are like nerve-wracking to me a little bit from like a budget standpoint.
Right.
That we, there's certain, we shouldn't be increasing one-time costs maybe we can do, but just knowing that that five percent isn't happening, and if you, if you're growing other things in, you know, for the next two years, you won't, you'll be playing catch-up, two X in twenty twenty-six.
Right, right. You'll definitely be playing catch-up and hoping that they don't do anything else to the levy in twenty-six, twenty-seven, and twenty-eight. Exactly.
And Susan, on the, I'm just trying to learn, the lit supplemental distribution, can you give me a sense for why that was double and or a little bit more about that?
Each, as businesses pay and send their local income tax payments to the State Department of Revenue every year, the State Department of Revenue is able to keep about a twelve percent operating balance in the fund for an individual unit or an individual county. So lit is dispensed a year and arrears. So currently, the lit that you are receiving was actually received sometime between July twenty twenty-one and the end of June twenty twenty-two.
Okay.
And due to businesses maybe not filing on time, additional amounts that weren't taken into account when the calculation was made for the dispersment this year, that trust for each unit can sort of grow at the state level. Once it gets past twelve percent, they have to disperse it back out to the units.
Okay.
So there was just, there was a difference in collection, there was a difference in calculation, and it was all through the Department of Revenue's calculations upon their, based upon their receipts. So maybe, you know, if, as wages potentially increased, or maybe as you got closer to, you know, higher levels of employment, more was collected than they anticipated, and therefore that trust fund grew and they have, they can't keep it, so it comes back.
And because of the nature of that, that's why you can't throw anything in twenty-four, twenty-five, twenty-six.
Because if we hit another big drop, there would, there might not be something next year. There might, that's, that's why we generally don't, because there's no guarantee that you'll get it. And some counties didn't get one this year. It just depends on the locale. It depends upon the level of employment. It depends on wages. It depends on the number of things. I'm plus timing.
Thank you.
Sure, certainly. So I'm not going to concentrate a lot on the, the next blue line, which is your operating dispersments for twenty-four at least in the forward, because those are estimates. Like I said, we did not have your budget workbook at this point, and I didn't have time to implement it last night. I can update you on what we see in your budget workbook when we get there. But if you look at maybe twenty twenty through twenty twenty-two, at this time last year, we expected you to spend about twenty-six million dollars in expenditures in twenty twenty-two. There were some additional appropriations. There were some encumbrances there. The budget amount was larger. And what actually happened in twenty twenty-two is you brought in more revenue than was anticipated, and then you spent less than we anticipated. So I know last year during budget time, we talked a lot about how you were getting to a nineteen percent operating balance. It was creeping down to that fifteen percent. As you'll see on the next page, it actually is higher than we expect because more revenue came in and you spent less than planned. So that's, you know, you actually see your operating balance came in at the end of last year at forty-eight point one percent. So again, that, that can always happen. You may see the same thing this year. There are some encumbrances. There's some large budget numbers actually this year. So you may see that same thing, but we're warning you, you're, you're pushing it. You're getting too close to that recommended bare minimum of fifteen percent. So just keep that in mind that a lot of times you do tend to underspend. You maybe don't use all of the encumbrances. You maybe don't use all of the additionals, but you also need to keep in mind what happens if you do, if you do all those expenses, and what if your revenue comes in less than anticipated?
What's, what's going to be the biggest driving force of our revenue coming in less? Like, what are the things that we need to be concerned about that we could say, hey, these, these are things that are going to cause your revenue to come in?
I mean, you know, it could be, your lit twenty twenty-four could be less. It's unlikely that it will be. It could be. We don't know yet what that state calculation is going to be on the MLGQ. I, well, one percent difference, I think, for another unit we looked at, it made about a two hundred and fifty thousand dollar gap on a ten million dollar levy, I think. So it's, that's not a huge amount. Granted, that's, that's a few salaries. That's some, that's some contracts. That's.
Overtime appropriation, isn't it?
Yeah, it can be overtime. You know, every amount can be, can be obviously used somewhere else.
Right.
So, I mean, those are your biggest sources. Your lit and your tax levy are your biggest sources of income in your General Fund. The other things, the charges for services, you can only change those so much. You can only, you know, make so many copies. You can only get so many birth certificates. You can only do so many of those things.
They're so, they're, it's incremental. It's not going to, it's not going to move the needle.
That's, that's not going to move you. They need a lot. Your big movers would be if, or if you had potential property tax, if people came in and, you know, wanted to argue about their property taxes, and you had a bunch of refunds, charge-offs, write-backs, you had another big box situation or something like that, and it affected your net asset value. That's always a potential. Plus, there's, there are new legislative changes this year to how three percent property previously was classified that now can be two or potentially even one percent, which changes that circuit breaker gap.
Yep.
And bring, you bring in less levy. So potentially, or have a larger circuit breaker gap. So that's, those are the, your big hinges, you know, your levy and your cir, your lit.
And I don't anticipate, which is like going with the circuit breaker gap, I don't anticipate it happening until next year. It's going to, this is the year of testing the waters to see. Next year, if it's successful, people are going to go all in. I just don't anticipate, I don't know. I could be wrong, but I'll anticipate it something this year.
Right, we won't actually see it until twenty-five.
Yeah.
Yeah, that's what I'm saying.
Yeah, it's, it's going to be another year or so down the road. Yeah. So it's going to take a while to catch up to that. So last year, you actually added about one point three million to your coffers, to your reserves at the end of the year. That's the kind of thing that you want to be mindful of going forward. Are your budgets balanced? Are they sustainable? Can you pay for them with the recurring revenues that you're bringing in? We can go ahead then and look at the next cash flow, which is next is your reassessment fund. This one again, that's just a graph that shows where we, sort of the guardrails, that fifteen percent that we recommend is the red dotted line below. The green dotted line at the top is a fifty percent operating balance, and again, that is balanced as percent of operating expenditures for a year. So if you spend ten million dollars, we would expect fifteen percent of that would be your operating balance for a given year. Then, once you get a cut of that fifty percent, that's when you would consider potentially capital expenditures, you know, capital work leave way to consider some things.
But it, yeah, but a capital expenditure, once again, which are those are traditionally being one-off projects, things that are occurring.
Capitals should be one-off.
I think, I think that's comfortable enough to keep that in mind, is that they're one-off, like they're one and done, paid for.
And sometimes your one and done though can have long-term support contracts. It can have, it can have long-term functions.
I think one of the, I think a good example of that is the loading machines that we're doing. It's a capital expenditure, but it's a three, four-year span, I think, that we agreed to. Is that right? Three-year span, but it's, it's pretty significant though.
And the next fund we have is the reassessment fund. This one receives a much smaller portion of property tax. We had to get some more in twenty twenty-three. We kept it at a similar level in twenty twenty-four going forward. It, you had a significant balance here, so we were trying to let you spend some of it down, and now you've hit the point that we had to support you, support it a little bit more from the General Fund again. But over the next few years, you're still saying, to try to keep it above that fifteen percent operating balance. And then we have the same graph for each of these. It'll show you where the, the guardrails are, the fifty, the top end and the fifteen, the bottom, the bottom end. Next, we have the County Health Fund. This one again is one that we have sort of, over the past couple of years, taken some levy away. Now maybe having the plan to get some levy back potentially this year, definitely probably twenty twenty-five and twenty twenty-six. This one's, you spent about, or you added about a hundred and twenty-one thousand dollars to the bottom line in twenty twenty-two. This one, I believe, is one again where you didn't quite spend as much as you had, as it was budgeted in this fund from the Health Department. And there was, I believe, some refunds and reimbursements that came back from the state for COVID vaccines, so that was helpful as well. That was that, the line there on line nine, about almost four hundred thousand dollars. And then going forward, next is your Local Garden Street Fund. This one is one, it's purely capital projects fund. There's no salaries and wages paid from this fund. This one, you basically can only plan to spend what you're getting, what you have available in reserves, because you're only going to use it for road sidewalks, paving streets, those kind of functions and projects. So you spent some of the reserves this year and planned, or in twenty twenty-two, and planned to spend some more this year, but then you'll have to build it back up to be able to use it again on larger projects. And then going forward, our next one is the Motor Vehicle Highway Fund. This is the unrestricted portion of Motor Vehicle Highway. Beginning in this year, you, uh, twenty twenty-three, you opted to shift more of this Motor Vehicle Highway money to the restricted road project only portion. So that's why we're dropping, showing the receipts dropping off drastically in twenty twenty-three from one point seven million in twenty twenty-two to about four hundred and thirty-four thousand in twenty twenty-three. Then potentially back up in twenty twenty-five. That's up to the council. That's up to your local desires. Whether you want to bring that back up at some point or leave it for the past these two years.
We, we need a strategy for this. I feel like we do this, this up in here, we play ping pong with this. I don't know if there's a plan. They really could come up with you on this. I feel like we kind of restrict it, unrestricted, restricted, unrestricted. I don't know what you think would be best, but.
A lot of necks hit though.
Yeah. It's just, you know what I mean? It's a, it's a, it's a, it's a ping pong back and forth.
Because as a reminder, you have to put at least fifty percent in the unrestricted, in the restricted part.
Right.
You can put as much, you can, don't have to put anything in this one if you don't want to.
Right.
This is the only one you can pay, or that you can pay salaries from without extensive booking things. You can pay salaries from the other one, but you have to be tied everything to a specific project.
And this is problematic for counties. We tried so hard to get the split.
Yes.
Instead of being fifty fifty, to get it to be sixty forty, and we did not succeed, but that is an ongoing effort.
Yes.
Stakehouse, because this, this is a tough one to work with, and we can speak to that.
Is there, are there any counties that you know of that need this way? That you like any of your counterparts, that you've seen one better way? It's still tougher, everybody?
Everybody. Everybody has the same issue.
Yeah.
Yeah. And the larger counties come through.
Even bigger issue.
Yeah, right. You have more roads to road than everything to deal with, and so yes, it's a little complicated.
And then next, we have the, this is your statewide nine one one fund is next. This is the one that receives fees from, nine one one fees on telephone lines. So we don't know at what point this one's really going to start dropping off or unless it's going to be supplemented somehow. It has declined a little bit, though not much, because three years ago, you got eight hundred and sixty-nine thousand. This past year, you got eight hundred and sixty-four. So this one helps support your nine one one call center.
Like this is the scary one that we keep hearing, oh, it's going to go away. It's going to, like, we keep hearing that, but have you, have you, have you heard anything from Sheriff's Association? Nothing?
This is also one that I, as the auditor, would like to see the council bring this to other entities and towns. Um, I, I feel like Lebanon, Whitestown, Zionville are a big contributor to these nine one one calls, and they need to be participating.
Well, yeah, you got to remember, stuff is law enforcement is fired. It's firing the infest.
We are going to talk about that tomorrow. We have a list of how many calls for each municipality, and we need to get a plan together for that absolutely. Here's the list right here.
Is that would essentially be an inter-local agreement?
An MOU.
An MOU?
Yeah.
Did Ashley lead?
Yeah. Yes.
I would agree. I think it would start.
It's been discussed.
A few times.
Newish years. I think it's time. We don't know what's going to happen with this.
Yeah.
It also needs, I feel like, to take on more salaries, because you have a lot of the dispatchers that are not being paid from here. Should be.
Uh-huh.
And with the help of Lebanon.
The IT costs. The IT costs.
Let me just pass this down so you can quickly see the breakdown.
That's a good, that's a good point. It does. Okay. Because I, I, I just know that.
We're, we're always trying to tighten in our budget, but you have to realize they're doing a lot for not just us.
Yeah.
They're doing a lot for the towns.
Oh, yeah. And then when you think about the, when you think about the actual, the breakdown of it, you think about Whitestown, Lebanon, and Zionville collectively, they're the lion's share of the calls versus the county rural area.
Lebanon is a big.
Yeah, Lebanon, I go, Lebanon, if you look at the numbers and you see the numbers, and obviously you're just getting those numbers from this last year, we're going to continue to share those numbers, but at the same time, Lebanon, it's between Lebanon County on calls for service, so you can take some of those calls. If you take that budget, if you take the group, the law enforcement out of it, yeah, the sheriff's office isn't up there, but as far as calls for service, last month they took more calls for service than anyone.
Okay. Because I wondered, yeah.
So that's a big ask from me to you guys.
And those were good.
Push for.
And a lot of the, it's actually from a timing standpoint, it's probably good. That'll, that'll actually go through each municipality's council is where the funding for anything will come, come through. I'll, um, I'll take some, I'll take that action. I'll, I'll work on getting some conversation started with some of the different council leaders. Then Sheriff, I'll pull you in. It's hard to say, it's hard to say no to the sheriff.
This is one that a lot of communities struggle with getting that support from other municipalities that contribute to the largest amount of calls.
And I have reached out to other auditors in other counties, and it's about half and half. Some of them struggle getting help. Some of them say, no, we've had an MOU in place for ten years. I mean, it's just, it's.
Do you know which counties already have this?
I have all the emails.
Can you, can you, I'll, I'll pull you in on that. Can you use the, I'll, I'll just say you use that as a border point, because if you already have something instead of.
I reached out a couple of months ago before I asked Tony for the numbers to see which actual counties have MOUs with their cities, and then I asked Tony for the numbers. I have all those emails.
In some counties, if you lack anything else, they can put a set lit in place, and that way it's taken on the top directly to the county, and the municipalities don't get a cut if that piece of lit goes directly to the county. I support the home sector for accessing any points. Okay, moving on, we have next is the food and beverage tax. This one, we made some estimates, but if you have other updates that make, you know, we need to change some estimates here, because we're going through. Okay, uh, moving on, we have next is the food and beverage tax. This one, we made some estimates, but if you have other updates that make, you know, we need to change some estimates here, because we're on with your budget. Please let me know. This was, I think, as of what you gave us through April. So two more months may swing in one way or the other. This one, you haven't budgeted quite to the amount that you've brought in the past few years, the past three years. This year, twenty twenty three, you're planning on spending a little bit more. But, um, until you can kind of get a better idea of the, how the fund behaves and what's coming in, that's, uh, just another part of learning curve with it.
This one has increased. Um, since COVID, we've seen it keep going up, and hopefully it will stay that way.
Yeah.
Is that just a, I'm assuming the correlation of that is just for businesses opening up. COVID is kind of.
Well, during, I mean, it's, COVID's kind of over, but during COVID, you, you had a lot of people that ate at home, but wanted.
We're still trying to support local businesses, yeah.
So you had the Ubers and the, or DoorDash and all of that. So that has continued. It's easy for people.
Gotcha.
Also helps us.
Yeah, there's a ton of new restaurants opening.
Yes.
Actually, I'm wondering, is like, new restaurants opening in our development happening, or just?
Oh, sure.
Uh, next we have public safety lit fund. Um, this one is, I know we usually have different revenue estimates. I didn't, don't have anything from the sheriff's department this year to see what we might need to supplement, uh, revenue estimates. We know how much the lit is. We knew how much the public safety supplemental distribution is for this year, but as far as those other reimbursements and recurring items, you could possibly make some differences there. But currently, it looks like the budget for this year is not able to be sustained. Some of that is because of that large encumbrance. Again, if you don't spend that encumbrance, um, that's gonna make it look significantly different. Last year, you did spend about one point six million, um, in reserves from that fund to support the twenty twenty two budget. So that's just another one that you need to watch closely for the budget for this year too. We know what the, you know, we, we don't know yet with that amount. We, we always play that game. They usually come out, the first round of estimates comes out sometime in August is what that will be next year. And then maybe by the time you adopt budget, we might know maybe the week after. It just depends on how quickly the state board or the Department of Revenue can work with the GLGF to get that information out. So going forward, this is one that, that deserves some, a close watch as you're working on the budgets. Uh, we need to some of the more capital project special revenue funds. Uh, first we have your correctional facility fund. This is the, the new lit that you've put in place. You're currently paying debt with it. You also plan on some operating expenses as well. So this one is just kind of, you'll bring in, but the, but the rate allows you to bring in and you'll spend as much of it as you have to on the lease payments and as much as you can on the operating payments.
But we can start paying some of the operational costs now, right?
I would like.
You can.
We can, though.
You can. There's, the commissioners would have to change it for a percentage that is now being divvied up between operating and. Yeah, it depends on your local ordinance and how it's ready.
Yeah.
It's potentially possible.
As I'm sure you will have some expenses coming into play next year.
It's coming into play now.
Uh, the next one we have is your tram and bridge fund. This is part of your max levy, but is only for bridges in the county. So this one, you just have, you know, as an X C split, this one gets spent for your bridge projects. This one, you added a little bit to the bottom line last year, about a hundred thousand dollars for twenty twenty three budget, though. Again, there's a large encumbrance there. Because just always have to keep, kind of keep your eye on those encumbrances. If they get spent, then yes, you run the risk of taking a large chunk of your, um, reserves. If they don't get spent, then it's not as, as dire situation as it could be on. Uh, next we have your CCD fund. This is a rate driven fund outside of your maximum levy. So this one is just at a specific rate currently point zero three two six. Then as your net assessed value grows, this is how the, the revenue to that fund, that fund increases. It's just calculated by your, uh, net assessed value, and that's how we come up with the amount there. This is capital projects that can use, be used for mostly anything that the county needs to spend it on. It can be used on IT contracts. It can be used on police cars. It can be used for a number of different functions. You have some, uh, had some reserves there at the end of last year in this fund. Uh, the next one is the motor vehicle highway restricted. This is where you're putting more into it the next couple of years. And then, um. So this one has the larger capital expenditures, road projects. This one's for preservation and maintenance of roads and road projects. And we have. Next is your riverboat fund. This one, you see a large line, um, there are twenty one, there was a hundred and twenty two thousand that came in. And twenty two, there was fifty eight thousand that came in. Paige asked me to double check it. I went back and double checked it. I looked at the state auditor's website. What appears to, this one is distributed based upon population, and like the amounts that the county got almost flipped exactly with Lebanon and Zionville.
Why didn't that happen? Cause last year, we were saying, don't budget, or like, don't plan anything out of this anymore.
They had told us two years ago that it was going to drop, that we knew that the amount was supposed to drop. We did not anticipate what everyone else, the population, or what they recalculated in twenty twenty two. I, I believe we sent a message to try to find out what was, why this was recalculated, what happened here, where was the shift that came in, and we haven't heard anything back. But we are anticipating going forward, sort of getting an answer from them, and reason, or why it would, if they, if it will go back. But honestly, I can't say why. All I can say is we double checked it. That's what it is, and until we can get an answer from the auditor or the comptroller at state, as to why it happened.
Yeah.
And what the exact population was, because it's supposed to be a population base, but I don't see how the swing went that far to, to take over half of it away from you.
Okay.
At least twenty, twenty five percent of people are gambling when that came.
Right, and those aren't the, and those aren't the ones that changed so drastically, because they, they show like on the website per each time it's spent, how much is going to go in. And it was like everything that was calendar fiscal, or fiscal year that was involved in twenty twenty two. Boone counties dropped, and Lebanon's went up. You were pretty much on par with where Whitestown is, but Lebanon and Zionville both went up significantly. Um, next we have the rainy day fund. Just showing you what the balance is, if you want to consider putting something in there, uh, and that deposit there. This year to make, like, to add some funds to rainy day, that would be feasible. If you want to know what your limitation is, we can help you make that calculation. It's currently still fifteen percent. It drops back to ten percent next year, I believe, in the end of twenty five actually.
Which is clear.
During the pandemic, they expanded the percentage that you could put into the rainy day fund, and previously it was always ten percent of your cumulative budgets. So if you looked at your budget order and your budgets were ten million dollars, you could put ten percent of that from your general fund specifically into your rainy day fund. They expanded that to be fifteen percent during the pandemic, because units receiving, receiving care dad funds, they were receiving other funds potentially. And they wanted to give them some expanded powers to put in, to add to their savings if they could at all. But there was a limitation on that. So I believe it goes through the end of twenty twenty four. At the end of twenty twenty four, it will revert back to the ten percent limitation on that. Oh, again, you think your cumulative gateway budgets are your budget order.
What you can.
Transfer in, yes. So you could previously, like I said, it was ten percent of all those gateway budgets. Then currently, it's fifteen percent of those budgets. And then at the end of twenty five, it will go back to the ten percent limitation. Um, next is the debt service fund. This is related to your road bridge bonds that you currently have. This is, you have a property tax levy for this debt service fund. So you, it changes as, each, each year based upon the payments that are necessary. Um, then we, at the end, we have some supplemental data. There's just, the first, if you're, you know, new and trying to familiarize yourself with funds, the next few pages have explanations of what some of the funds are used for.
Susan?
Yes.
The, the debt service, it's outside the circuit breakers and all that stuff too, right?
It's tech, it's, yes, it, it's not completely outside. It's, it's not like school debt that is completely outside, that is exempted from it. Your debt service levy is protected from it. It's still calculated, but it's spread amongst the other funds instead of coming out of your debt service fund. The only thing that really applies to your debt service is over sixty five exemptions that people have filed for. So technically, the fund's still, it's calculated for the fund, but it comes out of general, it comes out of reassessment, it comes out of health, it comes out of CCD. It doesn't actually come out of the amount you receive in that debt service fund. So. Um, then we have a, a slide that shows what your current lit rate is, which portions are, how much of that total rate. Um, we do show some budget to actuals from twenty twenty to twenty twenty two over the next three pages. So if you want to see what the budget was that was certified as opposed to what was spent on funds, you can see that information. Um, then we have some capital plan information that came from the highway department. I'm sure you have probably more of a holistic here. Um, then we have, uh, some cash balance comparisons. On the next pages, you can see historically and then what we're estimating the next two years. Your cash balances, but again, like I said, those future ones are gonna change because your budgets, the budgets we have estimated need to be replaced with your actual budgets. And then we have a schedule of debt, current debt held by the county, what, what payments are being, maybe made in twenty three, four, five, and six. And then I believe that's the end of the report. So are there any other questions anyone has?
Excellent. I can, yeah, I can be helpful to you next?
You're welcome. As long as it asks us something, as we get budgets in there, we'll, you know, we'll have an update of what your adopted budgets are at the end of the budget season.
Could you go over these big projects here in the picture with Lilly? This potential semiconductor, you know, job numbers.
I can.
We know that capital investment can also explain to us the innovative development district and maybe how that plays out as far as property tax revenue, what would be coming out of it.
Sure. Um, I'm gonna start with lit, potential lit revenue, and I've got something here. I can hear each of you. So I know you asked us specifically about three separate projects, Elise. And what I have here is the first one that's more of a known quantity. So you're at that initial Lilly project that you, uh, gave us information on. So, but it kind of, we can easily apply it to those other projects. So the thing with, you're calculating lit and what changes may be brought about by lit by a large influx of employment. You always have to keep in mind where the individuals live, because lit follows the employees back home. So we didn't want to assume a hundred percent of everybody with these new jobs would live in Boone County. So we, the numbers we have here are seventy five percent, and that may even be a, you know, ambitious estimate. And then we also can't assume the full amount of that salary, because it's lit is based upon AGI, adjusted gross income. So we assumed about eighty thousand dollars would go in of those, um, this was the five hundred jobs at an average of a hundred thousand dollars per job. And like you said, we're gonna think instead of about seventy five percent of those employees living in the county, and then we have to calculate it based upon that eighty thousand dollar per job AGI. So for certified shares, and you have to keep in mind too, that that lit is, is a year behind. So even if they get ramped up in full employment by new people working by the end of twenty six, you don't see that full effect till twenty seven, even twenty eight, even on down. So and then a lot of things can change between now and then, obviously. So the cert, that certified shares amount, we would expect under that scenario to only, to increase by about eighty five thousand dollars. That's adding seventy five percent, you know, four hundred jobs, and then at the eighty percent AGI. Your public safety would bring in about an additional forty six thousand, and then that correctional facility would bring in about sixty thousand dollars additional. The other project that you brought up was that, the very large one with potentially four hundred thousand, or four thousand, I'm sorry, new jobs, again, at a hundred thousand dollars a year. But again, we can't count on all of those. We're still even making a very optimistic estimate of about seventy five thousand. Since, um, five hundred in the first example goes evenly into four thousand by eight, you can sort of multiply these by eight to get an idea of what that big project might give you. So even at that rate, your certified shares would potentially be maybe about six hundred eighty thousand dollars additional. That's what goes in your general fund. Public safety, around three hundred and seventy thousand dollars additional. And then correctional facility, around four hundred and eighty thousand. So again, and still you'll have some lag time in there depending upon when they're actually up and running and going, and how long it takes everybody to get in.
You wouldn't have that many, it would take you, ten years. It would take you years to get to that. I mean, you're talking about to get to those employment numbers, even with IVCs incentives. You're talking at least twenty thirty to get to those. I mean, it, it's going to.
You have to build the facility.
I mean, it's, it's gonna take a while. I mean.
It's gonna take, it's gonna take a while. That's true. So, um, then the other one you talked to us about was potentially two hundred and fifty new jobs. You can kind of go the opposite way. Two hundred and fifty is half of five hundred, and so it goes the other way. In that case, that job, that, um, project could add about forty two thousand to your certified shares. Maybe twenty three thousand to public safety and thirty thousand to correctional facility. I mean, of course, there may be some combination of all three of these at some point, and it's, you know, we change, or you could have sixty percent of the people living in Boone County. But, you know, whoever lives in Cleveland County is gonna take their lit back to Cleveland County, whoever lives in Marion takes it back to Marion County with them. So that's really what hinges on trying to make long, long term estimates on something like this, and then the timing of getting projects of the, this magnitude up and going. So, I mean, the, those are, these are truly very, very rough estimates of what you might see eventually.
Oh, I'm sorry.
And there, I mean, there could be other, you know, businesses, other things that expand to, other places that, you know, maybe are competing for these places. If the wages go up, then obviously that could improve the situation a little bit, but, and it's also too, lit is always distributed based upon relative percentage of all the levies in the county. So if something happens and Zionville goes out and takes up some more land somewhere, and they get more levy and they keep growing, your share might not be as big as we estimated as being right now either. So there's, there's many different balls in the air here, like in these estimates, and making, try to, try to determine what they might be long term.
Personal approach has been with the economic development that's happening, but I think, I think it's, I think it's very, you know, there are folks that have mixed opinions, and that's for another discussion. But I would be hesitant for us to look at whatever that's going to be and use it to kind of bank on, hey, the potential, like. And, and I, and I get why we're doing it, but I think I've said since day one, anything that we get is just icing on the cake. It's, it's, it's so miniscule in the grand scheme of things. And we've seen it happen before where companies have committed to things, and sometimes they just don't come to fruition. Like at the end of the day, they just, they just don't happen. And when they don't happen, we're not on the hook for it. If we try to plan around that, of like, oh, well, we think this is coming and it doesn't happen. It's like the ambitious sales rep, they're just waiting on a deal to close, and they're gonna build a new pool, and it doesn't happen, now you got this big hole in the ground. It's like the ambitious sales rep, they're just waiting on a deal to close and they're gonna build a new pool and it doesn't happen, now you got this big hole in the ground.
You also have to remember some of these areas could become a TIF area.
So.
Yeah.
It's a whole nother.
Area, we don't do any of that.
We don't do any of it.
Yeah.
Well, that brings up a good point. Could you go over the innovation development district and what that means as far as property tax revenues?
I, I will to the best of my abilities.
Estimating, trying to give sense.
An IDJ, an IDD is an innovation development district. It acts very similar to ATF district. The exception to that is there is a potential, the, the number that I think is twelve percent. They can take twelve percent of that incremental growth. So it's only what's growing above that base. And that can be then distributed across the county to, to other units within the county. So the problem I'm having with it, or we're kind of having with estimates there is this deter, this difference between investment in the project and what the eventual net assessed value is of the project. Because generally what is paid for the project is not what it ends up being assessed at. And then you also have in play the potential for abatements, for tax abatements. So even if it, you are eligible to get that tax money, you have to wait out the abatement period. Because local units do have the ability to provide abatements. So we were given, because of the other individuals within Baker Tilly worked on some of the annexation studies from the city of Lebanon. We received what we believe are estimated net assessed values for at least that first project. And if it's, we've heard about three point seven million. The numbers that we were given by Par Ritchie is that the assessed value would be somewhere near one point six. So that's forty-five percent of, again, I don't know how valid those numbers are, I can't speak to that. We just tried to do a calculation based upon those numbers. And we've had, we've been kind of not lucky getting anything more out of the IEDC about it either. Brian Golden has been trying, Everly has been trying, and we have not had any luck getting valid information from the IEDC on these projects of what they feel the potential net assessed value would be. So if you, to do that calculation, if it is indeed one point six four five billion dollars in net assessed value. Or since it's Indiana, you first divide that by a hundred because it, we, we do property tax in a hundred dollar increments. That brings us to sixteen million, four hundred and fifty thousand. We then would multiply that times the county's tax rate. Your current tax rate is point one nine three oh. Obviously, by the time any of this is built and put in place, you'll have a different tax rate. But to do that estimate of point one nine three oh, you, you, they think you would get around three million dollars. But it's only twelve percent of that. So it comes to three hundred and eighty-one thousand dollars roughly. Now, if it, if the bigger semiconductor project were to come, were to pay off, were to eventually, you know, be put in place, songs, abatements, or anything else, that one is more, would be more significant. But that's, there's a lot of ifs in the tax.
There's so many ifs.
There's so very many ifs, like, because to, in order for an IDD to pay out like this, it has to be in place January one to have any effect on taxes the following year. So it would have to be built in place January one, twenty twenty-four for it to have any effect on your twenty twenty-five. I feel like that's probably not going to happen.
It's not.
No. So it, would it even be in place the beginning of twenty-five to affect twenty-six? And then if it's in place, what abatements are on it? What have they done? How, you know, what are they doing to that? It, it, it functions essentially like the TIF. It just has that added portion where the individual units can get some of the property tax back, that twelve percent.
And by the time we're even recognizing any revenue from that, I'd have to let out the tax abatements expire. I mean, I'm talking, I'm, I'm, I mean, we can be talking five to ten years down the road. Unless you have one still be here, some of us may not still be sitting here. I mean, it, it's so much, it's.
Right. And, you know, I know under a lot of normal, like, other tax abatement type situations where I know there are, especially like solar plants, they make economic development payments. I don't see where economic development payments play into any of that. That would be a benefit to anybody. It's only any property tax raised by that increment.
So is it, so is it safe to say any economic development opportunities at play, even some of the largest, like the semiconductor deal, you know, close, gonna be the largest of its kind, North America, potentially the world?
Right.
We still should be banking on that, like we just, we just shouldn't.
Cause there's just not enough solid details. There's not enough solid details. You know, and I really feel like until a building is in place, I don't know if you have solid details. If you remember that Chrysler plant up by Oklahoma, there was a building in place and there was still nothing going on.
And we haven't even been chosen.
Yeah, right, so.
Right. Just, just to have the discussion of what might possibly be, just to open our eyes and worth a discussion. So, did you do the calculation on that one?
I did. If we assume forty-five percent of the fifty billion dollars, it would be about a five million dollar tax boom to the county. Because it would be on twenty-two and a half billion dollars divided by a hundred, multiply to hundred point one nine three oh. Twelve percent of that comes out to be about five point two million dollars. I, you know, I don't know how, if you envision the IEDC letting that happen.
I know.
No.
God, no.
It's still based on property taxes, so you can only collect so many dollars anyway at the end of the day.
Yeah, I mean, it's, it's your rate, it's whatever, and by then if your other navs continue to grow, your rate's gonna drop.
It's gonna go down.
It, yeah, so it's.
So you say five million, but it.
Yeah.
That part.
Yeah. Always limited by that max living growth quotient. Hopefully, we'll be able to appeal it successfully in the first day. And you have to keep it in the calendar, say annexed its numbers.
Yeah.
Yeah.
That part.
Okay.
If they annex it.
Yeah. Okay, well, thank you. Any other questions?
Nope.
Thank you.
Yes.
Very helpful.
Very, very helpful. So Susan and Andrew will be with us all day today, all day tomorrow.
I'm here tomorrow, Andrew will not be here.
And he'll be with us through every single budget workshop, working in tandem with us, with the auditor's office. So it's a good, good working relationship. Appreciate it all. Okay, so next on our agenda here, Auditor Crum.
Um, I am actually going to forego saying anything as Molly needs to get out of here at eleven for another appointment. So I'm gonna let her take my spot. You're welcome. Come on up. Um, we'll have to configure the microphone because it literally, Molly, if it's not right.
We just need to send it.
Yeah. You just need to send it that way.
Thank you, Tony.
And after Molly will come back, Auditor Crum, for a few comments. Yeah, I just wanted to get Molly requested that she needed to be out of here at eleven. So.
Thank you again for letting me. Molly Whitehead, I'm Executive Director of Boone County Economic Development Corporation. I want to thank you all for your continued partnership and support with us over the years. Presentation you have in front of me, I'm not gonna go through at all. I did want to just highlight a couple of very key points, ways that the Boone IEDC serves this community. So what we do is first and foremost, economic development, so through the organization, recruiting and retaining those employers that are generating that tax revenue. We are the only nonprofit that you financially invest in that provides an actual return. Understanding there are limits, but the work that we do does have a direct impact on obviously everything that you do. You'll see here on page two just our economic development process, the leads that we respond to, about a hundred and seventy-five of those a year. And right now, we're just a two-person team. So we're getting a lot of work churned out for that. By the way, Claire Colette is sitting back here next to Jeff. She's our entrepreneurship manager, focuses on small businesses, of course. And if you flip over to page three, in addition to just the economic development work, what I really want to highlight is the other, what I would argue is sometimes even more important work that we do on behalf of this community. So the small businesses and entrepreneurs, they make up about eighty percent of our local economy, our local businesses that are here. We want to make sure that we don't forget them. And so we do offer a microloan program. We've given out seventy-five thousand dollars this year alone, fifty-four thousand dollars last year. Those are to startups, those are to existing companies throughout the entire county. And then Claire, her work last year was around digital inclusivity, not just broadband access, but taking a look at digital needs for small businesses and large businesses alike. And as a result, we are working with our small businesses on a digital upgrade program. So basic things like taking a look at their POS systems, are they integrating with their websites? What are their websites meant to do? How can we help our businesses take that next level? And then workforce development, a couple of main initiatives, second chance. So we see a grant from the commissioners a year ago for what we're calling our maximizing potential course. This is a course leading a partnership with Community Corrections and Probation. Hold a couple of these a year. We've had about a dozen or so individuals complete this training. And what we've seen as a result, we focus on strengths, we focus on empathy, we focus on applying for jobs. These are, these are areas that, you know, I, the, the whole community corrections team does a fantastic job, but they've got a bottom there plate. And so this is a way that we can partner with and bring that training that is not already being offered to the community. So we've seen individuals that have received job promotions, we've had individuals who have, one recently that came forward said that he had never been encouraged to seek a better paying job, to actually go and do better, aim higher for himself. And so he did that. As a result, he was able to kind of get some family things in order and start to kind of piece his life back together. So we, we're big fans of this program and invite you all to come join us. It's gonna be interesting seeing that.
How many individuals are in that program?
Um, we had over a dozen at this point.
How much was the total grant for?
Hundred and twenty-five thousand.
And do you get those referred to by the courts or how? How are those referred?
Community corrections and probations, they, they push it out, it's a voluntary program. They push it out to say, hey, we think this is available, but then they also identify some of those people that they think could really benefit from those services.
So they don't mandate anyone to say, hey, this is a part of it? How do you anticipate being able to serve?
That's a good question. I'll have to get back to you on that because our numbers have changed since we received that initial grant. So we're actually able to do significantly more. At the initial time, we were thinking about six to eight courses. We would do anywhere from five to ten people per course. But that, those numbers have changed, so I'll follow up on that.
How much of the grant do you have left or have you used?
We've probably only used thirty thousand of that maybe.
Okay.
Again, I'll, I'll get exact numbers.
Nope, it's, I'm, my, my, my math sure is gonna keep me honest. I'm just looking at cost per head of like how much we're putting back, it's about twenty-five hundred dollars a person. So if you're doing that, you can help roughly, I think a hundred folks in our community. Numbers roughly add up, did I do that right? At thirty thousand dollars in half of twelve individuals, did I do that right? Twenty-five hundred dollars. Does that sound right? I think that sounds right.
I'll get some, I'll get some data back to you on that so you can, you can have that. And then childcare is also a major initiative that we've been working on. We know that there are fourteen hundred kids in Boone County that do not have a seat. This is kindergarten and under. So meaning if their parents do actually want to send them to a pre-K program or a daycare program, especially the younger, they can't. And so that is a big workforce development problem and one that we are starting to chip away at from a policy standpoint. But also, what can we do to actually address it from a business development standpoint as well?
Fourteen hundred kids don't have a seat for kindergarten in Boone County?
Not kindergarten, under kindergarten.
Under kindergarten? So just for daycare?
How does that factor in YMCA here in Lebanon, those who care for childcare?
So that's, that's interesting. So we've got this.
And I think it was because of the lack of demand.
What we heard was it was more of a staffing issue, of course, I defer to them for, for all of that. The challenges that we see from a policy standpoint are due to a lot of federal and even state regulations. Here's how much it's going to cost, which means we can't pay people enough to work at our facility. So as an example, what we're seeing, some of the wages around the county, ten to twelve bucks an hour for somebody to work at a daycare facility. So that's twenty to twenty-four thousand dollars annually. Not livable if that's your only source of income. So there's, and there's some things in that policy piece that are, we believe could be changed that could help out financially to balance all of that out. So it's, there's no like clear answer, there's a bunch of different problems with that. But we know it's impacting the workforce. And then finally, on the community development side, Ready, I updated you all on this last year, but as a refresher for those who are new, this was a, or is an initiative of the IEDC. Our region, it's Boone County minus Scienceville, they chose to participate with another region. So our region received about three point one million dollars. We have made some appropriations to Lebanon and Whitestown. And then we are working primarily with our western part of the county on some downtown revitalization work. So we anticipate having some announcements on that hopefully very soon. We've been waiting for months and months on IEDC approval. And then as also heard that we're conducting a housing study. And so that will also include a utility study primarily focused on Abbeys, Jamestown, and Thorntown. So that at the end, we will actually have a picture of where do their utilities stand? What, what capacity do we have? What growth opportunities do we have? Where would potential housing developments, if they were interested in it, potentially be located? So that work will be completed this year. So have you answered any questions on that? But again, just thank you for, for your support. This is our annual budget request. We fall under the county commissioner's budget. We are at a hundred and forty thousand from last year and I would.
Food and beverage.
Food and beverage, thank you. Would request that we stay at that amount for this year.
Molly, you can come direct to the employees now? Could you expound on the situation?
Yes.
And with the potential merger with the Chamber?
Yes, so the merger right now, some of you may be aware, we had, had expressed an intent to merge with the county chamber. That process right now has slowed down a little bit. And as for our staffing right now, we work for our biggest need from an organization and quite respectfully to help promote this accounting as a marketing and communications standpoint. And so we are actively hiring for a director level position, somebody who is experienced and well-qualified to help lead our organization and of course the county to promote a better relationship.
How does that work with the merger? Is that, or is that why the merger's on hold?
There are, there are a variety of, of things that we're working through with the Chamber. Our staffing has nothing to do with it.
So will you need the same funding or will there be synergies that will have the ability to be able to say, all right, we don't have to spend as much money or tell me how that will work?
We anticipate, if the merger does go through, we anticipate, basically, we need to figure out if it happens, what happens with the membership, what happens with the private investors that each of us have? How do we maintain that? Our services from a, the fee-for-service contract that we have with the county, those will remain the same, those will not change. But we will still perform the same work that the Boone IEDC has always done, maybe under a different name. But again, that's a, that's an if the merger happens at this point.
All right. Further discussion or questions?
Right now, under food and beverage, Debbie, it's, it doesn't show that it's there, right? So it shows a negative number.
Nobody, nobody?
Subidity, I think.
Nobody said anything?
Okay, I, I just wanted to add clarifications.
And I guess for my clarification, your budget amount is four seventy-five, is that what they're asking for from us?
A hundred and forty.
One forty.
I'll take four seventy-five. That would solve a lot of problems.
Hey, I squeezed you in, Molly, don't be asking for more.
I'm sitting there looking like, what in the world?
So, and again, just new, new, new person on the block. So what's under the one forty? Did I miss that? Like, is, is the one forty?
Is there a breakdown of that?
It is a fee-for-service contract that we have with the county commissioners. We don't provide a breakdown of our budget because obviously we're much larger than that. But that does obviously help support some operations in addition to the programming that we provide and economic development services. that we provide and economic development services.
So, we've, so with that, is, the county commissioners and direct working with you on this potential merger, because do you lose your identity? Is there completely, if you do?
Your big takeaway from the merger conversation for today is if it happens.
Right, that's what I mean, if it does happen, if it does happen, it just seems like it changes a lot, but I-
The scope of our services will not change. Um, again, we've got the fee for service contract, which requires us to do certain work for the county and for the municipalities. Um, the Boone IDC, we have, we have a five-year strategic plan that we're a part of, we need to do a, the capital investment campaign as part of that. And as part of raising those funds, we are obligated to fulfill also that strategic plan as part of that. So, largely, the services that the Boone IDC provides will not change.
So, let me ask a, a different question. I know if it happens, but who does it actually benefit? Who actually gains from it?
The benefit, I would argue, is to the community as a whole. There's a lot of confusion over who provides what service to businesses. Um, there's some perceptions out there that there's some duplication of efforts. Um, and so, having that one, one voice for Boone County businesses, um, especially as we continue the growth patterns we're on, that would be the biggest benefit to this community.
So, that goes back to my question, uh, duplication of services, the hundred and forty thousand, you're saying it's, it's a fee for service. I'm like trying to peel back the onion, the layers of the onion, what is the one forty getting us? And if you do merge, like, does that amount come down? What is the potential merger going to happen? We can talk offline and figure that out, but that's what I'm, that's, that's more or less what I'm curious about. Like, if this, if this merger happens and we can save money, great, that, like, that's what we want to do.
One, happy to talk more offline about the process if you would like. Um, two, I do not anticipate that that amount would change over time, because again, we still have to maintain a certain level of economic development services. We still have to get a hundred and seventy-five leads out the door. We still have to do workforce development services, small business development, everything that we talked about today will continue. The Chamber of Commerce does not do any of those activities. So, again, it's perception of duplication that's out there. Um, if anything, we'll pick up a handful of smaller type of events that are done. Um, but the services themselves, what the Boone IDC does today does not change, and therefore, that, that request that we have, if anything, over time, is likely to decrease.
What percentage of the hundred and forty thousand that we give you is, what percentage of this, um, contributes to your overall budget?
It is about twenty percent of our overall budget. The fee for service contracts that we have are about forty-five to fifty percent of our overall budget.
So, it looks like they're staying, uh, the same.
Yep.
Is there any motions that we need at this time, Debbie, or?
We do.
Okay.
A motion to approve this line for Boone Economic Development Corporation, Justice Line.
Out of, out of food and beverage.
Just call the four lines out. I moved to approve the, uh, Boone County Economic Development Corp's budget of one forty out of food and beverage, line three, one, five, one.
Thank you, and the second?
Second.
You can get it.
All right, all those in favor say aye. I approve that.
Thank you all very much.
Thank you.
Do you have a question for now? Do you want me to? Yeah, we're recording. So, it is ten forty-six. Uh, let's carry on with the sisters bureau, and it looks like we have Nathan, Mr. and Allison who line with us, yes? Okay.
Allison, I'm here for my own support.
Oh, yes. Okay, and as far as the fund, let's see. Eleven twenty-seven is where you're looking at. Thank you.
Eleven twenty-seven.
Hello, how are you?
Nathan, we've got a check for you right up front.
Thank you.
So, would you like to suck a copy of this? Hi, how are you? I'm trying not to step on your toes. Who would like?
Is it one, is it just one?
There you go.
Do you have electronic?
I do have an electronic, I'm sorry, all those pages that go together.
Oh, oh, sorry.
Yep.
Do you want to keep that or?
Uh, sure.
Could you like please send over again, I'm trying to copy?
You said it's a Karen or Debbie, they probably can.
I think everyone knows Allison is the new executive director of Boone County Economic Development Corporation. Nathan is the president of the board. Kevin serves on this board as our chairman. And Jerry Ritchie is our newest council member, so I'll make sure that I, uh, you, Allison, you'll contribute, Nathan, I believe you all know each other, so.
So, thank you so much for having us today. So, the CBB is, um, as you all know, quite few changes, I'm new, and I can still count my time in this role in a number of weeks, so that's pretty exciting. Um, we are really excited about where the CBB is going, because as you know, in the past few years, we brought on a number of new hotels, and with that, we've seen a lot of growth that has come from, seeing all those new hotels that you come online. So, as a result, we've seen a exponential growth of our innkeeper's tax. So, um, and as you're passing that around, my computer is warming up, I'm sorry, I'll get this sent over to you. Um, you can see on that sheet kind of where we have comes from since twenty-one, twenty-twenty was a hard year to, um, balance anything against. So, the sheet that you are seeing is anything that's come from twenty-one up through twenty-three currently. So...
I know Kevin probably is real familiar with that. So, we have been going through a revision process where we are going to look at all of the grants that we can out in order to better identify where we can really put our funds to make the biggest impact in Boone County. Many of you know that we're going to have a lot change here in Boone County with the Lee district, which is really exciting. And our lens of tourism is going to change. So, we're going to see a lot more business tourism in the future. We really want to embrace that for crucial. So, um, what you're going to see on the innkeeper's tax as a result of what we are asking for this year is you're seeing growth month, I'm sorry, year to year, so LY, January to current year of twenty-nine percent, February twenty-two percent, March fifteen percent, April seven percent, May thirteen percent, and June eleven percent, which averages out to about a fifteen percent growth year over year, which is pretty exciting. And that puts us, if we continue on this same trajectory, which we anticipate at bringing in around nine hundred and forty-nine thousand, two hundred and fifty-one, although we do anticipate that trajectory to grow as we get into latter half of the year, which is really exciting for us, because that means that we're able to do a lot with what we're, what we are bringing in for the community. Um, so, not only place making events like what we do with the concert series and how we support many of the large scale events that are great for, what we're referring to as place making, is good at being able to attract workforce. That's a really strong piece of tourism and actually how the IDDC is looking at tourism going forward, but also how we're going to attract visitors. What are we doing in order to make sure that we are attracting visitors better in the future now that we have more capacity for those visitors? So, overall, we're asking for eight hundred and fifty-four thousand for next year.
And this-
Thank you, Debbie.
As you're all, I see your minds whirling around up there, this is not a true budget amount. We are a pass through for the CBB.
Yes.
So, really, that money comes into us, they ask for it, and it's squeezed back out. So, it's not, she's not asking for eight hundred and forty-three of Boone County's dollars.
Thirty dollars.
That money comes into us, we write it back.
As soon as she said that, Nathan came to the table.
So, I didn't want to leave Allison out, as she said she could count her time in weeks. I've been involved with the board for quite a few years. Uh, the CBB, the way it gets funding is five percent of all hotel room dollars that are spent within Boone County goes to the CBB. So, if a hotel room is a hundred dollars for the night, five dollars comes to the CBB. So, that's where these revenues come from. If you look at the hotel growth, we've had multiple hotels, there's one in Whitestown that's finishing up now that'll open, uh, there's multiple plans, we've even done economic development deals for the rec site, and there's one that still hasn't came to council, but it's been through the CBB for Hickory Junction, for the new hotels there to use, dedicate some of those funds to help build tourism within those parks. Um, but based off of that, and just looking at our continued growth, growth of hotel cities within Boone County, is how we kind of come up with these budgets. And the reality is if the hotels, if we end up with another twenty-twenty and we have this downturn, then we have to adjust on the fly with our budget. But it'd be very similar to like utilities or anyone else that has a revenue that comes in, revenue that goes out. We operate the same way. So, these are funds that are coming in through the innkeeper's tax. We intend to use cash on hand, uh, to cover the majority of, so as it's coming in, we want to get the CBB to a point where when we go to approve, and it may be down the road to twenty-seven, twenty-eight, when we approve that budget, it's approved based off of cash on hand, that we have the dollars on hand in, in our account to cover for the year, and then we bring it in as through. But, um, with the rapid growth of Boone County and the rapid growth of the funds within the CBB, we're still, we have about eight months worth of cash on hand, um, so it'll build as we go through, but we also don't want to just put the brakes on to wait on it to build. We want to stay progressive with growth mode, so our numbers do supersede what's coming in, but we do have the cash on hand to cover.
And you get five percent of Airbnbs as well?
Yes. I was just getting ready to comment, we just got the June statement from the state.
Okay.
Um, they get Airbnb, Expedia, HomeAway, Priceline, Rocket Travel.
Okay.
All of those.
Okay.
Those come from the state each month.
Okay.
Um, those for June were about twelve thousand dollars.
Okay.
Everything else comes directly from the hotels into the treasurer's office.
Okay.
And we receive it through us.
Okay. And then when you look at the, uh, receipts that come in, the bulk of your expenses what?
The bulk of our expense currently has historically been grants, just handing the money out to other groups, because we haven't had a full, full-time person. We've had part-time, Jerry Day has been great, um, for years, but it's, the CBB has, it's time for it to grow. We've talked for the past five years about when do we bring on a full-time person, when do we start to bring staff? Obviously, we have a great, had a great opportunity to bring Allison in, she's done great things with other organizations across the county. Uh, but we looked at other municipality, other counties, Hamlin County, obviously Marion County's did some beast, but looked at other donate counties and how they operate, and we felt it was time to bring in a full-time and start to vault this to, instead of just handing the money to other groups to invest and hold events.
Yep.
What can we do to use this money to, to really start to promote Boone County and bring people to Boone County?
Thank you, I appreciate that. So, can you shed some light, I guess, on this merger with the EDC? Because obviously, that would be scaled, some synergies, probably a reduction in costs. Do you anticipate that happening if the merger happens?
So, we were part of the original talks with that merger. Uh, I can't speak fact on anything of where that merger stands, I mean, there's a lot of rumors, speculations. Uh, we didn't feel a merger with us and any one of those organizations made sense, because they all touch a little bit. Obviously, the Chamber works great with, hey, the restaurants and tourism, um, from a just people coming to visit, families, which is one of our big stays, is people just visiting, families stay in hotels. EDC does great with business, bringing businesses in, and that's another reason we want hotels, we want higher-end hotels, that make people that are coming, these are our businesses stay here, not downtown Indianapolis. We felt there was a great, if that merge happened, then it's definitely worth the conversation. Without, we hit a little bit of everybody, so it'd be hard for us to just merge with one, because then we felt that there wanted to be focus on all. But if that merge happens, I, I think we would definitely want to get to the table. We're a little defred because of the way we're funded versus them. Uh, we have two groups, obviously, there's the Tourism Council. The Tourism Council is created by state statute and we're by code, hey, we exist, the money comes to Tourism Council. That would still have to exist and still be its separate entity, but the CBB is a separate entity that's created, and that manages, there's a, an agreement between the Tourism Council and the CBB, and the CBB is the organization that actually runs and spends the money. Instead of it being the CBB, it would be this merged organization and a contract between the Tourism Council and that organization of what that looks like and how this budget's been. Because everything's still subject to state appropriation rules.
Right.
And the Tourism Council has to, so anytime we move money, the CBB, once it's budgeted and the Tourism Council's done, they approve the CBB to do the budget, they get with it. But if they need to move money between lines, we actually call the Tourism Council to session, have a meeting of the Tourism Council, adjust it based off code, whether we need to file with SBOA, whoever, and then the Tor, the CBB just kind of runs the organization, I think.
So, it's not as easy as waving a wand to merge?
So, a question out of curiosity, you could send it to, who's on the Tourism Council? How's that Tourism Council separated from your board?
Tourism Council is based off state code, and the way the state code is right now, the largest population municipality within the county gets their percentage of votes. So, Zionsville's the largest population, there, it's a seven-member board, and that was established by the county, how many members? So, seven members, Zionsville has enough to where they get three members. There's another statute within there that says if a single municipality other than the largest produces more than fifty percent of the revenue coming in, which Whitestown does with our hotels, they get equal amount of votes. So, Whitestown gets three votes. So, then that leaves one vote which stays to the commissioners, and they've appointed Wendy with that. And then, the municipalities have worked waiting on January to finalize an MOU, but Whitestown appointed Mayor Gentry as one of ours. They've asked Zionsville to do the same to where it becomes two, two, and two, because there's this constant shift between the three of six months down the road, it may shift to where, hey, Lebanon had the three best months, so now that needs to shift. But as of January, it's Whitestown, but then next year, it may shift to eliminate, communicate that confusion. We've all talked about an MOU, all three parties are on board, it's just waiting on elections and everything to be finalized going into January, because we don't want to do something now that doesn't fit.
But then you got to switch it again.
Yes, and if we can put the MOU in place, then it would just be two, two, two appointed, that creates the Tourism Council.
Right.
The CBB, the way we established it with our bylaws, is the Tourism Council plus a commissioner and a council member, county council. So, one officer from your board, one officer from the commissioners sit on the CBB. That way, it keeps those lines of communication.
So, Kevin says so. So, so Kevin sees the budget, you know, and helps approve the budget at your local level, and all we're doing, all we're doing is just ratifying, uh, this at this time, so. Is there any vote that we have to take on this?
It's approved, we have to prove.
You just have to approve, yes.
What they've done, what they've asked for?
Basically, uh, what, my last question, do you all give grants to the EDC? Are they, because they said that they get different grants from folks as well, and I know one of your biggest expenses is you give grants. Is the EDC a recipient of any of your grants?
No, most of the grants, I actually have a list here that I created. Most of the grants are for things that are actually going to be specifically to entice tourism.
To come.
Yes.
A bit of stuff.
Yes. So you're looking at the Heartland Fly Fishing Festival, the Viking Fest, things like that that are specific to tourism. So the EDC is great for economic development. We have more of the tourism lens that gets to those.
Get people to here. Gotcha.
Yeah, historically, we have the big four. We, we get money towards some of the consulting fees on that. Not saying that if the EDC came with something.
You wouldn't.
A special one-off project and said, hey, we're wanting to do this for the county. That's getting involved. We've talked, I think it was the Chamber did the Disney Experience last year, which Disney University has to come in and teach you about tourism. Something like that, we've talked about doing. If all of us got together on a program like that, we would probably give funding to something like that. But just to hand money over, we haven't. We do that with the Boone County Fairgrounds. We give them, I believe, sixty thousand a year. And we give money to Shurka Creek, our center. So we get small operating grants to some of those to help. Obviously, the fairgrounds, we also send a lot of business that way because that is one of our biggest event hubs for, for events.
So what is the number actually that we are being asked to approve? These are, so we have a different number here.
Okay.
We do, because it depends on receipts they cover.
What's the number you mean?
Eight fifty-four, eight hundred and fifty-four thousand is what she's asking. It's not a true budgeted amount.
Yeah.
We just need you approving that.
Okay, thank you.
What's the line? Do we approve line two seven one seven for the, for the visitors in Convention Bureau for eight hundred and fifty-four thousand dollars?
Thank you, and a second?
Second.
All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Same sign. Thank you.
Thank you all.
And great to know that you're on board.
What budget number did you say that is? Two seven one seven?
Yeah, two seven.
That's the line number?
That was just the line number.
Yeah, we added that to our budget, but for some reason we have one one two seven.
Oh, that's the beginning, oh, I'm sorry.
Beginning, no.
Oh, okay.
Oh, I took the fact.
Oh, okay. We, we redid our whole way.
I know, I've read up numbers for days. You think you're getting a million dollars for mine? One one two seven, eight five two three.
Where does the project at Rex stand?
So.
What was your question, John?
The project at Rex.
Oh, okay.
Hopefully, see something still this year with the new MOU. Peach actually just got in June, a signed letter from the governor's office that gave us our covenant not to sue on the rec site. So that got delayed due to COVID and then obviously inflation, increased interest rates have cost us to do some fancy work to try and figure out how to run with the project. But we did finally get the covenant not to sue. In December, we got to pull all the test wells. So all underground remediation is complete. So the, the site's ready to build now. So now we can move forward with. But the agreement we put together on the project was three years ago. The economy's changed a lot the past three years. So now we just have to figure out. And we're very close to coming up with that deal now. It's just a matter of getting everybody together.
Who gets it signed?
Hope is that it gets reused within the site.
Huh?
So the intent is to keep the rec signed somewhere, restore it and utilize it within the project somewhere.
That's John set away, that's John set away, I'll put it on my phone.
Well, we had an agreement with the family when we bought the land that it's either reused on-site or there's an auto salvage museum. And if we don't reuse it on-site, we're supposed to donate it to that auto salvage museum. So, but the intent, the partner involved wants to reuse it. They think it could be a really cool piece to, to reuse in one of the buildings, so.
Nice.
Thanks.
Thanks.
It's a unique sign.
It is a unique idea, yeah.
Who are you onto IT? You know, we talked about just that opening welcome for each of us to facilitate. John kind of got in there and did that. So if you would like to take the assessor when they come. And it's just that simple greeting at the beginning. And then, you know, I, we don't hardly need any prompting to ask questions and to get the business of the day done. But we'll, we'll try this. I think it's a nice way for each of us to offer a welcome and facilitate. We all keep our eyes on the time center.
Sure.
Okay? Sounds good. All right, so with that, you're ready to go to IT?
Okay, sure.
And Sean, I get to be the, the welcomer, if you will. And I think, is it Eric Goodnight as well? That's online. Sean and Eric, I'm Sherry Ritchie. Eric, I don't think we've had the pleasure of meeting. You may have got, thank you, thank you. You've got the short straw because I get to introduce you and guide you through the, the process. But I'm looking to my colleagues here, as Elise said, to help me through this because just, you know, I looked through your notes, Sean, and I appreciated what you put together in advance. But Debbie, as it relates to the document itself, it's embedded in this, in two different places. So I'm sure you're gonna help me, Sean.
I will, yes.
It gives the numbers of the funds to pull this up.
So we'll start with, it's under the one thousand budget, last floor is nine oh three one. IT's kind of spread out every year. We kind of move stuff around every year. And so we're in several different lines.
So you just said?
One starts with one thousand, ends with nine oh three one.
It says oh seven five three.
It's gonna, might take me a second to get there. There it is.
He works with the last floor, we work with the first and the second.
Yep, you're great.
Okay. All right, so as requested, we went through and identified obviously the items that change at a year-to-year basis. Again, just to kind of, for those of you in the council, the way, way we're kind of broken down is we are kind of split between three main budgets. We have items in county general, we have items in CCD, and we have items in PSL. The county general portion of the IT budget is your typical maintenance contracts, your warranty contracts for hardware, your internet circuits, the IT salaries, obviously, those types of things. The county general is kind of, I, I've always looked at it as kind of keep the lights on, if you will. Most of the applications we have, most of the hardware we have, obviously has to have agreements in order to use them. So they don't really, they usually go up a little bit every year by a small percentage because obviously everybody typically raises their S and M. But I've highlighted on this first section, four items in software maintenance specifically that are going to change from the previous year. Item number one, we have Office 365 throughout the county for our office access as well as email. Microsoft, over the last couple of years, has enhanced their spam filtering and antivirus protection solutions and have added that to their licensing package because, of course, Bill Gates doesn't have enough money. And so basically, in order to gain access to that type of functionality, we have to upgrade our licenses from the E3 that we currently are utilizing to their E5 package. This is an ongoing annual cost increase. If we do this, it would increase the, that portion of the budget from eighty thousand to a hundred and forty-five thousand ongoing. I can tell you based off of the review that we have done on email and I'm sure pretty much every employee that gets emails can tell you, we get a lot of spam. We get a lot of questionable material coming in. The solution we have now does a marginal job of protecting the county. And user education we've done with the employees has certainly helped in that we do on a daily basis, get five or six tickets created every day. Hey, this looks suspicious, what do you think? And we'll analyze it for that, block it if need, and let them know what to do with it, basically. But the sophistication of the spammers, if you will, is growing significantly. And our concern is if we don't do our best to protect the county in this regard, we're going to start causing problems for ourselves. So that's why we've made the recommendation of increasing that licensing to the E5 solution.
How many people are you moving from E3 to E5?
We have around three hundred and fifty total users. We would be moving probably eighty percent of those over to the E5.
So I am, I am challenged with this in particular. Moving from an E3 to an E5 is not going to solve your spam issue whatsoever. I, I can tell you from firsthand experience from dealing with customers in my day job, it will not solve your problem. You're going to continue to be attacked. And moving from one license to another is not going to change it. It is the equivalent of me having a iPhone twelve and having email on my phone, moving to an iPhone fifteen or whatever it is and thinking that a new hardware piece of device or something is going to change. There are other things in place that can help it. And for Microsoft to, your Microsoft rep to tell you that, one is absolutely wrong. And we should actually be pushing back significantly against that. There are other security features and tools that will help you with that. But just moving the license alone, from what I've seen, is not going to help you. Knowing as well that, I don't know what happened there. Knowing as well that you're going to spend sixty-five thousand dollars to move from an E3 to an E5. Then, in addition to that, when you renew this contract, the cost is going to go up. I've never been, I've never seen in my history eighty percent of an organization on E5s, especially at the level of employees that we're dealing with. I mean, when I say highly unusual, E5s are normally reserved for your C-suite, your legal and your finance. At your largest organizations in the world, this cost is going to get exorbitant every year. Because once you're locked in, you can't go back down. I think you're on, once you're locked into an E5, you can't go back. And once Microsoft digs their claws into you, you will get into these contract renewals and they, there's no turning back. And the actual incremental increase of sixty-five thousand dollars for the small amount of licenses that we had is absolutely asinine. I don't know who our re-salaries or what is happening there. We don't have a SOC. So are we outsourcing that? Like the, the tax that we're getting, the license increases are going to, this is, I, I just, I just don't fundamentally see that as being the resolution to this, especially for sixty-five thousand dollars. There are other security features and tools that we can implement for cheaper costs. Because once this happens, I think what is going to end up inevitably happening is the bad actors who are attacking us, they're going to continue to do it. Microsoft is going to say, here's another tool or feature that you need to add on. And guess what we're going to do? Next year, you're going to come back before us and say, I need to buy this security package or this software or this feature that's going to cost me a hundred thousand dollars. And I'm going to be the first one to question you and say, you told us last year that you wanted to move from an E3 to an E5 and it was going to help prevent these. And that was sixty-five thousand dollars down the drain, not including whatever the additional cost is going to be where we live.
Sean, what do you say?
Well, a couple of things. Obviously, technology and the virus and attacking environment changes regularly. Do I agree with you that this is the only time we're ever going to have to increase? I agree with you, that's not going to be the case. I a hundred percent agree with that. We are going to have to constantly evolve as technology changes. As far as your comment that we don't have a SOC, that's not accurate. We do have a SOC. We, we partnered with the state of Indiana about three years ago. They released a FireEye solution that allows all ninety-two counties to be monitored and by a twenty-four hour man SOC. And we have their antivirus solution. We have the FireEye appliance that does track all traffic basically going in and out of the county. And does give us the ability to lock down. For example, a computer were to get a virus, the solution can self-isolate. So if it happens in the middle of the night, for example, they have the ability to automatically lock down that solution. I would also agree with your comments that there are other solutions out there. I'm not sure I a hundred percent agree with you that they're less expensive. But we could certainly look into other solutions. FireEye does actually have a email component that does something similar to what we're discussing here from a Office 365 perspective. We can certainly look into those options. The other side to this, I guess I did not mention, is it does give us some enhanced or some increased volume or capacity with regards to mailbox sizes and OneDrive sizes. County is starting to use OneDrive a lot in a lot of the offices. We are, we do have a few offices, not eighty percent, obviously. But we do have a few people that are coming up on the current threshold for mailbox size that we need to address. But there's definitely options out there.
I, I would just look at what I would, what I would love to see you all do. Instead of you spending a ton of cycles on it, I would love to see you take some of the budget that you had, get a quick gardener subscription. And I don't know if you've used gardener before.
I used to be a member of them.
So you know what I'm talking about? Their gardeners are, they're the end-all be-all. Like you let them go do the heavy lifting for you. Get a gardener subscription, tell them what our issue and our challenge is, and let them give us some quick, easy solutions. Because when I look at it, I mean, I did just a quick search on all, you've got malware bikes, you've got Avast, you have MindCast, you have Barracuda. You have so many different solutions from a cost standpoint. I'm just telling you, my, once we get locked into this E5, when renewal comes up, man, we are, we are going to pay dearly.
Hey, we don't disagree with your comments specifically as it relates to Microsoft. I mean, we are challenged with Microsoft at a lot of different levels, not just email, but obviously even at the operating system level and the cost of readjustments that they tend to make on their operating software.
Yeah.
And their database softwares and what have you. And so I don't, don't disagree with your comments as it relates to Microsoft specifically. We have used Barracuda in the past, and you know, some of those things have been challenged. You know, we're in a unique position right now in terms of technology that spamming has become, you know, a sideline legitimate type of programming.
Oh, it's for real?
For whatever reason.
Yeah.
You know, people have just found time to, you know, create havoc and problems for, for all organizations, not just ourselves. And so in our initial investigation, we believed that, you know, the Microsoft approach made some sense to look at that and help with that against spam protection. But we're certainly willing to step away from this. I think what we've done here is at least opened up the, the discussion that we do want to do something different. And there is going to be some increased cost regardless if you approve this or not at this time. At least we've got it in front of the council and we can certainly step back and take a look at some other solutions.
Would a suggestion be, Aaron, since your day job is what it is, to, to get offline after they've, they've researched some other possibilities with a different number, suppose, you know, likely less than sixty-five thousand, but only going to increase. And then you guys come together again for an next meeting?
I'm happy to do that, yeah.
Is that, is that doable?
We'd be happy to have those kinds of things.
I'm happy to do that. I would, I would.
Yeah, we have, just so you're aware, we do have a technology board where we have representatives from various bigger offices as well as the commissioners and the council here. Aaron sits on it.
Yeah.
So we meet quarterly and discuss these types of things.
Okay. So do we want to move to the next three items in this part? Does that sound good, Debbie? In terms of, we don't have to have resolution on this today?
Yeah. Let me just ask you really quickly before you move. Are we using like Duo or two-factor authentication now for everything?
We have on some application, not across the board.
Okay. Because that's another.
Some applications have not moved to, you know, two-factor authentication. So, you know, some of the depth products that we have out there are in fact dual authentication. We have moved that, some of our, our compliance in Marion County, we've been saying.
Gotcha.
Have, have pushed that, so we now make that a.
Because that's another.
Yeah, it is, and it's definitely going that route. A lot of the sheriff's office applications do have dual, but not all applications.
Gotcha, thanks.
Okay.
NeoGov, this is a form of a discussion, I guess, point on how you guys want to handle it. NeoGov, just so everyone's aware, is the HR application that the county went to two years ago, I believe. The last two years, it's been a CCD budget, which is typically a capital expenditure budget where we would put first-time purchase cost. But after the initial purchase, or the initial solution to deploy, we would then move the S and M. But after the initial purchase, or the initial solution's deployed, we would then move the S and M over to county general. That line, not only did it increase from 65 to 85,000 for next year, but it also is still in CCD. And my question to you guys was, do you want to keep it in CCD? Do you want to move it over to county general? Obviously, that's a lot of money. I'm just asking for guidance, basically.
Karen, how many other items are in county general services?
Well, this is just IT's county general. Then IT will have the input and.
Okay. How many other service contracts like this are in county general CCD?
In CCD, not, this is the only one.
I'm thinking about keeping it in county general. And it's going to go up, couldn't say annual service agreement.
It is, yes.
Do we know why it increased so much?
That's what I'm saying. Why?
Yeah. Well, again, we're not really involved in that project. My understanding was that was the way the contract was written. It was, I think it was 55, 65, 85, I believe.
Year over year.
Each, well, 55.